February the first, Trotwood Madison School Board Work Session. I would like to call this meeting, this business meeting to order. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Collington.
Present.
Mr. Lumpkin.
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons.
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry.
Yes. You stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have the reading of the mission statement will be read by Mackenzie Barxdale from Realm Nation Virtual Academy.
The mission of the Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by innovative and dedicated staff. Community participation and state of the art resources in an stimulating atmosphere.
Great job.
Yes.
Next, we'll have, um, adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda as present.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda as present.
I'll, I'll see.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions? No questions, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes. Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Collington?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. The agenda has been adopted as present. Next, we will have presentations on the Mozak Grant Art Project. Ms. Jackie Moore? Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jackie Moore. I have a nonprofit, chosen outreach ministry. And we reached out to cultural works last year and applied for a grant. And inside of that grant was an art project that we wanted to give back to our students. My son is a graduate of Trotwood High School and he's no, he's grown now, thirty, I think. But I, I know how important it is for our kids to have something to look forward to, something other than the streets. And there's so much going on in the streets now that I thought that this would be a great opportunity for us to connect with Trotwood Schools and to give back to my community because I also live in Trotwood. So I reached out to this young man who is an amazing artist and he is...
Hello, my name is Aldris Bush. I'm originally from Dayton, Ohio. I went to school at Colonel White where I took up art and paint. I'm a graphic designer, I'm a comic book creator, and I do murals and paintings from New York, Los Angeles. I've done some in Chicago. When I was contacted about this project, I actually, like I said, I was working on comic books. So I've been trying to get these comic books published. I have, uh, next year coming out a hundred twenty-page graphic novel. So it's a lot of work still left to do. But what excited me about the project was that opportunity to help students learn art and use that to, uh, develop skills that'll help them later in life. So I was told that I would have a chance to work with some students and put up some art projects to build a mural. And I think I can help them a lot with learning skills like color separations and mockups, crafting and lettering, also with perspective and painting on the walls. So, uh, like I said, with that opportunity, I'm, I'm grateful to do something like that here in Ohio, close to my home. So with that, I don't have any art that I could show you at this moment, but you can always look me up. AldrisArts@gmail.com or Aldris@LeftHemComics.com.
Can you spell it?
A-L-A-L-D-R-I-S. That's it. Oh, AldrisArts, A-R-T-S. Or LeftHemComics.
Also within this grant, it pays, his salary also pays for all the art supplies. So it will not be anything out of you guys' pocket. So, and what's not taken care of with the art and paints, then my, my nonprofit will take that and pay for it as well. And also within the grant, it also, I'm a, I'm a minister of music the last fifty-seven years. And also within this grant, it has a part that we can do some type of music if, if needed. And I know Ms. Paula knows about that, but we also are opening up our, a music school in the next, hopefully in the next three months that'll be open. So we have some, uh, about three or four guys that, you know, down friends with that play in the churches. There's nobody coming in after us. I'm, I'm down to one church now. I used to play for two and three. And we just realized that there's nobody coming behind us. So we're trying to give back to our community in that way as well. So that's coming up in the next couple of months, so pray for me. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one question. When you're selecting what you're gonna have the mural to look like, will we have student voice in that?
Absolutely. We won't do anything without you guys' approval. And definitely want the kids to be a part. Aldris was asking, what do you want? I said, we don't know yet. So as soon as we get, get the kids together and whatever you guys come up with, we'll definitely, we'll do the best we can. Yes, ma'am.
Do we know where the mural will be placed?
That would be also up to...
It'll be in this building? And you see, we got plenty of wall space. So we'll just, yep, in this building.
Yeah, actually, uh, the wall, uh, the shape of the wall and a lot of features of the wall would determine what that composition will be.
Okay.
But also, uh, when designing the mural, uh, that's gonna, because it's gonna be so many different eyes that looks at it and approves it, you know, it's got, that, that can often be a long process. So because the one person comes to me and tell me, you know, I would like a painting, you know, I have to get in their head, figure out what they want, you know? And so with, you know, a whole board and the students behind me trying to all figure it out what we want to do, that's gonna be a process. So just kind of bear with us and we can manage something that's everybody can agree on and be happy with. And then once we do that, then we'll start mopping it up.
Sounds great.
Yes.
About approximately, how many students and the age group of the students?
The, the grant itself said from ages five to, I think, seventeen. I think five is a little much, but there are some artists, I start playing piano at three. So if they have that much talent, we will, we'll go with it, yeah.
Yeah, that is next level, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is Bottom Line and the Executive Director is Mr. James Cosby.
And Jay, I was able to send the presentation. Eric, did you see that? I sent a presentation over.
Well, I would get that set up. I'll introduce myself. I'm James Cosby. I'm the Executive Director of Bottom Line Ohio. And I, I came deep, so I brought my whole staff. Alexandria Burns is our Director of Programming and Emily Broughton is our Director of Development. And from our national team, Shawia Hamilton is here today. So we're very grateful to be here. I just want to tell you about our nonprofit, the work that we do, and hopefully how we can support our high school students here in Trotwood. Nope.
Oh, sorry.
That's not it, but it's cool. Actually, I don't really need it, I can just talk about this. So Bottom Line, we're an educational nonprofit that supports first-generation students from under-resourced backgrounds, predominantly students of color, to help them get into college, graduate from college, and go far in life. How we do that is through free one-on-one advising that we do with students their senior year of high school. Then we'll have a free advisor that will work with them for four to six years when they get into college. What makes Bottom Line unique is, one, our advisors are full-time paid professionals. So what that means is we're able to hold our advisors accountable for outcomes. Uh, we have a curriculum that has gone through rigorous testing for us to know that it can make a measurable impact on your students. But as you know, it's hard to keep a volunteer with a student for four to six years. Because they're full-time staff, we're able to retain them and frankly have them grow professionally. When we hire our advisors, we want to hire advisors that are younger than me and that are from the communities with which our students live. So we, our application actually opened today for students. Now I'll talk about that a little later and we'll send information out on that. But our students, but yeah, we want our students to be able to, to see somebody that looks like them and has successfully completed college and, and see it firsthand. The other piece that makes Bottom Line unique is our curriculum and our model was put to the test in a randomized control trial. And basically what that means is we had a control group of students who weren't working with Bottom Line, a group of students who were, were working with Bottom Line. And for eight years, we've been following the outcomes of those students. And not just us, a third party from University of Virginia, University of Texas, conducted this research. And the big takeaways from that research was we have a measurable impact on student, students going to college, students graduating college. If they work with a Bottom Line advisor, they'll make two times their family income upon graduation. Students who work with a Bottom Line advisor are twenty-three percent more likely to graduate college within four years. There's a lot of data tied to that study. But another big takeaway from that, from that study was the results that we got. So Bottom Line started in Boston. It's in Boston, Chicago, New York. So naturally, we're in Dayton, Ohio. Well, I think somebody laughed, I appreciate that. So what that showed us was it's not just a really good advisor that gets good outcomes. It's not just these big cities that can produce good outcomes. Wherever we do our model, as long as we do it the way we know we can do it and the way we're supposed to do it, we can guarantee the outcomes that we talk about. We have two programs that run concurrently. We have our access program, which is most relevant for us in this room. That's our high school program. So I said, our application just opened. We're recruiting juniors who are in their spring semester. We'll close our application on June first. We'll meet with those students over the summer and we'll work with them for the entirety of their senior year. As far as student eligibility goes, I know I talked about first-generation students, under-resourced background, students of color. As far as GPA goes, our sweet spot for GPAs is two-point-three to two-point-seven. Um, if you look at our website, you'll see a two-point-five. But what we really try to communicate is this program is not just for your students with a three-point-oh. We don't want to just support students with a three-point-five. There's lots of programs for those students who we're trying to reach is your average student who by their senior year, we know has the capacity to be successful in college. They have the capacity to go on to school. But nobody's really telling them that because they're not the honor student, they're not the three-point-five student. Let's see, talk about eligibility, trying to run through mentally where we're at. Uh, the success program, we will work with students for four to six years if they go to a target college. The target colleges in this region are gonna be our local schools. So Central State, Wilberforce, Wright State, Kettering College, University of Dayton. We'll work with Sinclair, we'll work with Otterbine, we'll work with some of the, uh, really, we'll look at our college student lists and we will have advisors that will work with them on campus for four to six years. The things we work on with students at the access level, we have what we call the lead curriculum for access where we help students create their college lists, we help them write their essays, help them apply for scholarships, fill out the Common App, fill out the FAFSA, and then we'll support them on making an affordable college decision. When we talk about affordability, what we're saying is when a student goes to college over the six-year life of their academic career, we want them to take out less than thirty-one thousand dollars in federal student loan debt. On average, since Bottom Line started in nineteen ninety-seven, our students take out less than nineteen thousand six hundred dollars in student loans. And that's with students going to college in Boston, Chicago, New York. I think we can do better in that number here in Dayton. Um, so, so we really, our students make the final decision, but last year seventy-eight percent of our students made an affordable college choice. And as you know, one of the, one of the reasons that students drop out is for financial reasons. Um, and usually that financial reason that leads to a student dropping out of college is less than fifteen hundred dollars. So we want to work really hard to make sure they make a solid choice. But the other piece is Bottom Line will be there with them lockstep while they're in college. There's lots of programs that focus on access, very few programs focus on success and graduation. Once a student graduates from college, Bottom Line will work with them for six months to help them get that first job. So when we talk about a student graduates and makes two times their family income upon graduation, we're active in that process. We will work with them, we have our own internal network. Uh, we call it Bottom Line Connect. Kind of looks like LinkedIn, but it's Bottom Line's proprietary LinkedIn. But if you volunteered with Bottom Line, if you've been on a board, if you've done any work with us, we, we basically force you to make a profile. People willingly make a profile. So if a student needs a paid internship their sophomore year of college, they can go on Bottom Line Connect and have all of these professionals that they can network with. Part of what we try to do is to help students build not just their academic capital and get that paper, but also help them build that social network and that professional network because we know that's really how you get those jobs. It's not always a meritocracy, a lot of it is who you're able to network with. So we try to build that in with our board. Uh, to give you a quick timeline, so our application is open today. Uh, we'll send out information, um, on how to apply. There's an online application students can fill out. Um, I've already met with Principal McCray multiple times. He's been wonderful to work with and is really excited about. He has a list of students that they want us to get in front of and support. February first, the app opens. We'll have an early decision deadline for May first. Students at that point, ideally, I want to have all our students, and part of that's because we need to hire advisors and it's based on the number of students we have. Our goal is a hundred and eighty students. Once the application closes on June first, we'll start meeting with the students, that one eighty. Fall of next year, we'll start meeting with students. We will meet with students at their school. So here at Trotwood, we're working to even have a temporary space to meet with students here. We don't want transportation to be a barrier for students and us being able to meet with them. But yeah, I think that's Bottom Line and then nutshell. Um, we're really excited to be here. We're partnering with various other school districts in the area, but I'm very biased and I'm most excited to work with Trotwood. Uh, so we're, thank you for giving us this space to talk about what we do and we're really excited to work with your students. Are there any questions?
Awesome. Yes.
All right, cool.
Did a good job. Thank you for both presentations, did an awesome job. Thank you. Next is our Treasurers Report.
I have one informational item for you this evening. Um, the minutes for the January fourth organizational meeting, the January fourth work session, the January seventeenth special meeting, the January eighteenth special meeting, and the January eighteenth regular meeting. So you can see, we have a lot of meetings in January. So that is just for information and that's all I have to say.
Any questions? Any questions? Next, the Superintendent's Report.
All right, I just have three things for you today. I'm asking for next time, this is just information, but that we accept a donation from Gated Properties Global. It's a five-thousand-dollar check that we have. B, item B is approval for an overnight out-of-state field trip for the Robotics Club. They're going to Zionsville, Indiana, February ninth through the tenth for in twenty-twenty-four. And then, yes. Oh, that one is for action, yes, because it's February ninth through tenth. Thank you, Ms. Allen. I'm gonna read the details to that for you because we would like to get a vote on that. Okay? I'm requesting approval for the Trotwood Madison High School's Robotics Club to travel to Zionsville, Indiana on February ninth through tenth, twenty-twenty-four. The trip will be supervised by Lieutenant Colonel Retired Odell A. Graves and will be paid for with J.R.O.T.C. funding. Students will travel by rental vehicle. Students will compete in the VEX LAN robot competition and upon return, they will conduct an after-action review to discuss their strengths and weaknesses. I think he covered everything in that letter. All right, I, I would like a...
I would need a motion?
Yeah.
For the approval for the overnight field trip for the robotic, um, team for February ninth, February through the tenth.
A motion that is stated.
I'll see. There it is.
Okay, it's been moved in, properly moved in second. Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Collington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion, cautious for the students to attend the field trip February ninth through the tenth.
All right, and next I have our personnel agenda. It's a short agenda tonight. We'll start with A, which is our certified personnel agenda. A-one is recommendation for the approval of the following certified retirement for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. A-two is a recommendation for the approval of the following certified home instructor for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Now we're moving to classified personnel agenda B. B-one is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified resignation for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. B-two is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified retirement for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. B-three is a recommendation for the approval of the classified new hire for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We also have our personnel agenda C, the administrative personnel agenda. We have a C-one recommendation for the approval of the following administrative salary adjustment for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'm asking for approval for this.
A motion that we approve A-one, A-two, B-one, B-two, B-three, C-one, C-two as stated.
This could be for information.
Oh, I resent that, I'm sorry.
No, I'll pause there, I'm jumping.
Okay, and that is all I have.
Next is our discussion follow-up items. A is the solar eclipse and related activities. Vice Chair, Mr. Simmons.
I printed those off for you if you wanted to share that.
Okay. Did everyone get copies?
I'll pass them.
Oh. Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think we had tough.
Ms. Simmons had, um, shared with me all of the really exciting things that are gonna happen on April eighth in our community. And, um, we, she just wanted to sort of share that as a discussion item about what we can look forward to for our students.
So this is a group, um, shop-like business Dayton. Um, it's headed by a young lady, young lady named Kenya Akbar. And she's looking to get several of the school districts involved in this, um, and just hosting some different watch sites and working with a lot of the teachers, science teachers here in the district and having a couple conversations before April eighth and coming up with a plan for our students to participate in some activities. And she wants to start having those conversations. So it's nothing that we have to do, but she wants to and she's gonna be presenting it to all of our local school districts. So, um, we can begin to, if we want to participate, reach out to her. Um, she has sent over her contact information. But these are just some of her ideas, mini festival events, block parties, workshops, and then just tours of the city and watch sites. And they will be providing the free glasses as well.
I was really excited about it because, um, if our students are staying home, which I think Green County has announced that all of their schools are closed on April eighth and I'm sure, if not all, the majority of Montgomery County will as well. Um, it's nice to know that they will have something to do. It actually sounds pretty exciting to me with the shopping.
Yes.
And, you know, black businesses, um, having an opportunity, um, in that realm. So I, I was glad that you brought that up because it does give us a little bit of assurance that our kids will have some opportunities to learn about the eclipse. And I think our teachers as well, science teachers and all are gonna be talking about this before it happens.
So do we have a list of the watch sites?
Um, she has provided, the, the document is like twenty pages long.
I can forward everyone the document, I have it. I was just trying to save the district a little money. Because it's very colorful.
Yes.
So, but I will send that to all of the board members.
I do have a question. Is there, um, can we get a, a date that she can come present prior to the eighth?
I'm sure she would love to.
Okay.
Can we provide her with a date?
The March, the first one in March or the next one? We can ask her whichever is best for her.
Okay.
Or the following meeting. Once you contact her and she can let you know which, which she's available.
Okay.
The next, um, item under discussion are graduation rates, graduation status. And so I was able to get that information. And so I was able to get that information for everyone. I'll sort of go through that with you. All right, so it's that time of year where we're starting to really hone in on how many students, you know, we have and where they are as far as graduation. Our total senior count is two hundred and eighteen. Currently, we have on track, I have the number, a hundred and fifty-eight seniors. Those who are not on track are sixty seniors. Now, we are helping those seniors. If they are not on track, they're having what's called progress monitoring to make sure that they are, you know, following like a plan to be sure they can graduate. The seniors have been enrolled in a course to earn the needed twelve points of industry credentials is one thing. Certified letters have gone home to the parents of seniors that are not on track for graduation. Those students will get more frequent check-ins with their counselors so that if they're not on track, to make sure that they are following it. Academic labs have been added to their schedules if they're not on track for graduation, and they have more time in the school day to complete their credit recovery courses. Seniors have met with their counselors to receive Ohio Means Jobs Validation Seal paperwork so that their mentors at work or in the community can validate their paperwork so that they may earn the O M J seal. So we're doing pretty good right now. A lot of our seniors are already, like, we have eleven seniors who are fully complete with all of their graduation requirements. Seniors only needing two to five credits. They've already met their competency requirements and all, a hundred and three. So all they gotta do is hang in here, so that's really great. We have some seniors who need credit, and they include their credit recovery courses and diploma seals, but they have met their competency requirements. That's twenty-six, and seniors needing competency in Algebra I or E L A II or both, but have two diploma seals are eighteen. So our seniors are moving in the right direction. And those who aren't, we're, you know, we're watching them. They're being watched. The next discussion item, follow-up item, was on scholarships. And so I talked to the counselor, asked what are they doing? Scholarship information, as you all may know, is posted in the class of 2024 Google Classroom, and periodically it's put on Parents Square. At the high school, there's a bulletin board that has scholarships posted on it, and it's supposed to be updated as they come in. And so students just going, you know, to class, to lunch, can stop in front of that board and see what scholarships are available. The counselors meet with students about specific scholarships, like we have the Franklin B. Walter Scholarship coming up and the Date Montgomery County Scholarship and other local scholarships. So they will call those students in. Actually, I know yesterday a notification went out with all the students who qualified for the Date Montgomery County Scholarship. And so they would all be told about it and have the opportunity to apply. Mrs. Brock shares scholarship information with Mr. Mickey, and so that's a counselor with our assistant principal who posts the information to the high school website. So we've been talking about this since last year about making sure our students are aware of scholarship opportunities. And I do think that we're on a good track for making sure that their parents find out about them. Any questions about that?
I have one. Of the sixty students that we have that are not on track for graduation, do we know how many of the sixty are ones that we don't have the opportunity to save?
Oh, I, when it tells those dots about what we're doing, I think we have the opportunity to save them all. I would imagine if we have a student who's expelled or maybe been expelled, so they're not at school for a long period of time, that may hamper their ability to. But if it's a student who is at school, you know, steadily working, there are pathways, and that's what they call these opportunities to get the seals and things like that that will help them to graduate.
I had one question, I don't know if I missed it or not, but how often are we meeting with those sixty seniors?
It said more frequently. Yeah, more frequent check-ins with the counselors for the seniors that are not on track. So I'm not sure if there's a specific number. It's probably dependent upon the need of those students.
I have a question or statement. Well, if that is the case, Madam Superintendent, I would like to request at the State of the Board that we put ourselves in a position to possibly harass those sixty parents via whatever we can do. And maybe get with Mr. McCray himself and see if he can harass. And if that don't work, maybe go to their houses. If we can't get them and figure out exactly who we done got in contact with and ain't, because I look at that as an emergency at this point. And I think that's great that you can save all of them. But I really talked last year about being more aggressive with the parents at home that ain't hearing us or don't move to the tune of the rest of them. And I digress, but I really would like just not one time to reach out to them or just one phone call, one robo-call or one letter. Because sometimes these kids ain't even at home home after school or, and then we got five hundred plus in group homes.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they're included in that sixty, but I would assume that a percentage might be in there.
Yeah. And they did get a certified letter.
Can we get some clarification on the frequency of the check-ins?
Yes, I can ask.
He said it better, but yeah.
Yes, I can get, I can ask.
Because I mean, more frequent could be, I met three months now.
More frequent is more better. Yeah, okay. I'll see if I can get some clarity on that. And...
And just for clarity, it's just because of, just so the public understands, the graduation rate is one of the things that the district is scored on by the state of Ohio.
Yes, it is.
So we have the ability to move the number of that sixty. If we can get thirty of them to graduate, if we can get forty of them to, we have to do whatever we can to be able to get that metric up on our scorecard. So that's the reason why we're questioning that so hard.
Yeah, I understand, for sure, I understand. And you are right, I mean, parents, things happen, and so you can't just do a one-off because they may miss it. I am glad that the letter, a certified letter has went home.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that way they had to get that, but, you know, it still doesn't, because sometimes that'll still get set aside, you know. So yes, I will make sure, I will continue to work with the guidance department.
One more thing, in your defense the last few years, this sixty does not represent her leadership. I've been here. That is really about one percent we have on a normal basis since our new board members have been here. I'm just bringing that stat up because I don't want this to look like I'm saying you're not doing that. But I just, I'm so on, though, the graduation thing is one of my biggest things and my favorite time of the year. I love when we graduate, I like to wear the cap and gown. And that normally is around about six kids to maybe one on a normal basis. But that sixty is the largest I've seen since I've been here.
And it will go down.
I digress again.
No, you're exactly right. At this time of year, because we're starting second semester, is, we have sixty. That number's gonna change significantly, and I will keep you updated as well. You know, you all understand too how that goes.
So, yeah, because right, so if the school year ended today, that will put us at about eighty-two and a half percent of graduation rate.
And we, and that's why we're glad it doesn't end today. But the second semester, you know, is when a lot of that credit recovery is completed. The kids are in it, you know, so they're getting the credits. So that's why it significantly does drop before graduation.
And I think the important thing is that we're tracking those sixties.
Right.
That sixty and know the reasons why, and if they do fall out.
Exactly, yes, you're exactly right. Knowing who they are and keeping track of them.
And tracking our effort that we put in.
Yes.
I would actually like to see the tracking, though, because like you said, you have a certified letter. So counselors are meeting weekly, bi-weekly. What other form of communication are we actually trying to execute to get our parents and our students on track, those sixty?
Okay, I will follow up for you. That's all that I have.
Okay, so now we're at board comments. And we will start with?
With treasurer.
Treasurer.
Oh, treasurer comments, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Treasurer comments.
All right, this is a great opportunity. I have several other candidates today. And I have to bring my paper, so I can announce the names right away. The great grandson, Tousar Gandhi. The great grandson of Mahat Gandhi. He, in plain, very plain English, he said to us that the bottom line is how you present yourself, how you act is what students are looking. All the books and all that are very good. They're looking at individuals, you know, mirroring what you're doing. And that struck home with me. So I want to get his book, because he has two books. I want to buy both of those books. And it was wonderful for me. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Superintendent, comments?
All right, I'll follow up with what Ms. Allen talked about. It was a very good experience for us when he came here to central office at the end of his day. But if you look at our pictures, this is what we spent our day doing today. We started at the middle school around nine o'clock, and then middle school students walked with us over to the E L C. And I will say this, it was a great presentation at the middle school. He spoke to those students very well, and I think they learned lessons there. And then he came through, and as you can see, it was... How many students are in that building? Three hundred and eighty-nine. We shook every hand, we did whatever symbol they did for mourning. Some were, you know, raising their hands or hearts up or hugs or whatever. It was the coolest thing. It wore me out, so I can only imagine that it must have worn him out as well. But he persevered on, and at the E L C, we were able to have a nice lunch. And we had, the middle school students stayed there. They walked with us from the middle school to the E L C. So we took our march, you know, we did our march, and they stayed, and they were excellent, all of the students and the staff. I just want to give a big shout-out for our staff for doing this. It was really great. Also, they received, and I'll pass this up, I just had to make sure it ends up back here because Gandhi gave this to me. But the kids were given a little special handshake and a coin if, you know, they were part of the group that he actually had time to sit and talk with. But it has Martin Luther King, Gandhi, and Nelson Mandela on it. It's really a cool coin. So we feel like that's something the kids will have and will be able to remember, you know. Some of the after-school programs have been working also on this peace period that's going on right now. It's between January fifteenth, which was the assassination of Gandhi, and it goes through April fourth, which is the assassination of Martin Luther King. And so that's like a period of peace during that time. So that's what he talked about with us. I also want to bring up that I went to see the Muse Machine event over at the high school. And they did a great job. They did a version of Phenomenal Women by Maya Angelou, and they also did, you know, her book is I Know Why the Cage Bird Sings, but then she has an after the cage bird. And they did a really cute hopscotch dance and taught our students the dance. And something that was very special, we have a student who was in the audience, and he's not very engaged, you know, typically in school. And he was back there, I mean, really, all the kids were learning these dances because they were teaching them the hopscotch dance and all. And it was just an excellent group of students who were participating in that. So it was very nice at the high school. We have a lot of great things, as my board knows. And it's constantly something going on that's a good thing. The last thing that I have was that I was sort of wanting to share with you our after-school information. Is that okay if I do that at this point? All righty. There you are. So as you know, you know, tutoring is very important, and we are... And we're doing it in all their buildings, and so I just wanted to give you some information. Ms. Allen, I will pass this to you. Looking over it. So as you see, if you look at this handout, Ms. Jordan Isaac helped me put this together, so thank you for that. It'll tell you the building, the times and the days of the week that they have their after-school tutoring programs. Then it'll tell you the subject or the type of tutoring that's going on in each building and the number of students that are participating, and then the number of staff that we have as well. So, for example, the E L C, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, from three-thirty to five. There's direct and explicit small group instruction for sixty-five students, and they have seven teachers who put that on. Madison Park, three-thirty to five-fifteen, four days a week. Their aspire-to-go-hire group, they are a group that come together to do like enrichment things after school. And then there are thirty students who are in small group intervention because they need, you know, a lot of extra help. So that group is there as well. They have five teachers who work with the small groups, and then they have three pairs. And Mr. Lucas is working with the aspire-to-go-hire group. Westbrook Village does four to six o'clock, Mondays and Wednesdays, fourth grade and fifth grade reading and writing. There are twenty-five students, two pairs and four teachers. The middle school, two-thirty to four on Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. They have Monday, Wednesday math in the E L A, and Tuesdays and Thursdays enrichment. About sixty students are participating with four teachers, two intervention specialists, and two pairs. At the high school, they have Mondays and Wednesdays math and science. They have approximately fifteen students per day there. And then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have so, English and social studies. And I believe it's a little bit higher number that comes, but I didn't remember to put that on there. So he has eight teachers, three math and two science on Monday, Wednesday, and then two English and one social studies comes in on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The high school didn't start until December fourth, and since then, they've had two hundred and forty-five students who've attended, and that's averaging about twelve students per day who are coming in. I will continue to sort of keep you up on that. As you can imagine, an after-school program comes, you know, yeah. We can have more sometimes than not, but this is a good average of what's going on right now. Any questions on that?
Are there mandatory triggers in each building that makes it mandatory for a student to go?
I would imagine, and I do have some principals out here with me, but like the thirty students in the small group intervention, that was probably triggered by scores. A document was shared with me today about how to help our students, you know, get over the loss that we had. And one of the things that they talked about was after-school tutoring. And so, you know, also the idea of knowing who needs it. So to your point, what is gonna trigger them to get that help? And letting parents know that their child is behind grade level encourages them to participate in after-school activities and summer school. So, you know, they want you to have a robust summer school program and let parents know that their child is behind. And then they're more likely to sign them up. I can thank Madam President for that information. Thank you. And that's all I have.
I do have a question.
Okay.
So the sixty students that are struggling to be on track for graduation, can they take advantage of... So the sixty students that are struggling to be on track for graduation, can they take advantage of the tutoring, and how will that help them?
I'm sure, for sure, they can take advantage of the tutoring, we know that. And I will find out, you know, is that where they're lacking? Because sometimes, you know, the sixty students who are not on track, it might not be necessarily something specifically associated with the grade. It could be something like they don't have, or they didn't pass a certain test, or something along those lines. So I can definitely remind the high school, and I'm sure, and I, I shouldn't even say it that way. I'm sure that they are on top of that, but I will say it again to enforce it. And I'm sure this intensive tutoring are probably those students who need to pass, let's say, the algebra test. Because you have to pass algebra to graduate. So they could have everything else, but they got to pass the algebra test. So that could be the intensive tutoring.
So right now, we don't have any triggers in place that say this student needs to pass the algebra test?
Oh, no, I'm saying, they do, and that's like sort of in here, if you'll see. Seniors needing competency in Algebra I and ELA II or both, and credits. But they do have diploma seals, so it's eighteen of them.
I guess more specifically, the question is, does that filter into this tutoring program?
Well, right, that's what she's asking, and I'm sure it can, I would imagine it does, but I will find out. I don't know why it wouldn't.
Any other questions for the superintendent's report? No questions? Now we will go into board comments, and we will start with Mrs. Carrington. You don't have any comments? Mr. Sidney Davis?
Always, always. Great job today, Madam Superintendent, Madam Treasurer. Thank you to our IT department, look, I'm doing this by heart now. Thank you, operations, to our, our virtual learning principal, what's up, thank you, good to see you in the house. Our athletic director, all our administration, Madam and Sarah's administration, and our biggity get-down athletic can hoop that I'd have known, I've never played him in a game of twenty-one, middle school principal in the house. And just our coordinator in the back by AD, I appreciate y'all staying through these lengthy, lengthy board meetings that have been shortened due to our Madam President now. And just thanks to all, every now and then, I meditate at a Dal temple. It's called the Hyundai Temple, they have them from California to Florida, everything. You get on your knees on these little mats for four, five hours, and you get a thousand-year blessing, and, and sense all that. They sent me something that I thought was pretty cool. Pretty much, our lives can be so hopeful when we cultivate one's heart and share our message. We're graciously offered so many opportunities to uplift ourselves, from classes to ceremonies to rituals, to everything we do in life. May we continue to encourage one another and walk this journey of life together as we utilize precious life to strengthen ourselves from within. That was all I would like to share with everyone, I digress, and just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkin.
Yeah, I, I do have a couple of things, so I won't be yielding my time to the next person today. The first thing that I'd like to do is to commend our student athletes, and our students that were in attendance at Dunbar High School, and the way that they conducted themselves when some chaos broke out over there. Our students were very well-mannered, and I don't think enough times they get called out for the positive things they do when something like that happens. So I want to first commend our students for how they represented our community. The second thing that I want to talk about is my trips on our boardwalk to Madison Park Elementary School and Westbrook Elementary School, and some of the extraordinary things that are going on in those buildings. The thing that stood out to me the most was, one, the artwork that we saw in Madison Park, and, two, the hydroponics program that they're doing in Westbrook Village. And I was just taken back by, by the fact that they have a Wednesday cooking class for males that happens every Wednesday after school. Males get together and cook, they also have another, I forget what the program's called. Rocks program for women, and Dr. Cosby, myself, and Ms. Cherry were talking about trying to extend those programs so that the students can be involved in those going forward. But we always want to highlight the things that you don't really hear that much about with Charlotte Madison City Schools. So as, as early as fourth grade, kids are learning how hydroponics impacts agriculture in one of the biggest agricultural communities in Montgomery County. So I just thought I'd point out those few things.
Thank you. Vice President, Mrs. Simmons?
And I was, I concur, piggyback to that, I, I think it just kind of adds to what Erin was saying. The presentations today was just a compliment to what we're doing here in the district. Other people want to get back and see the value of our students, our teachers, our staff, and what we're doing over here. I was impressed by them even considering us, the mosaic project as well as the bottom-line project. So I was very pleased that they considered us, because there's tons of districts that would fit those categories, but yet they chose us. So I am very honored that they selected our students and feel that we are a worthy district, and we know that our students are worthy of it. So I'm very proud to be a part of this district, so that's my two sentences for the day.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to also kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Lumpkin had mentioned about our boardwalk. I was so impressed with what our students are doing. And once again, it needs to be publicized more, what our students are doing. I'm excited about this eclipse event, and hopefully, we will get the young lady to come and present to us. I wanted to ask about the cell phone usage, the pouches? Just wanted to know how that was flowing with the high school. I know that Mr. McCray had said, you know, we threw in the towel, so we got the pouches over there. I wanted just a little follow-up to see how that's working over there. And, I don't think, oh, and if we have any dates for any Black history programs, would you share with us? So that we can adjust our schedules and calendars if possible.
Gotcha.
Okay, well, if that is it, then I will need a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, the employment, the dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual per BOE policy zero one six six N R C one two one point two two G one. Action may be taken.
I'll move.
Yes, Ms. Allen, would you please call it off?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
And Mrs. Simmons?
Yes, motion passes, we will adjourn to executive session, time is six twenty-nine. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Treasurer. I am so sorry.
I need a motion to declare us out of executive session.
Our motion.
My second.
It's been moved to second and we were out at seven forty-six.
I'll be one with somebody. Yeah, well just one time out of these years.
Declaring out of executive session at seven forty-six. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Our motion to adjourn.
Our second.
Yes. Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Chair?
Yes. Motion passes.